Good evening, everyone. Thanks for making time and space for all folks listening and everyone present. We'll call this meeting to order. Let's establish that we have a quorum beginning with a roll call vote. Joe.
Here.
Corby.
Here.
John.
Here.
Juan Carlos.
Here.
And I am here as well. We do have a quorum. Corby, has this meeting been properly noticed?
It has.
Thank you. And to help ensure that we're centering our board work around our shared values and serving our students, we begin each of our board meetings by reading our district's Equity Framework and the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of the agenda. Joe, would you be willing to read those aloud for us this evening?
I'd love to.
Thank you.
The VASD Educational Equity Framework is, "In the Verona Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our systems such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity." And the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement reads, "There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho-Chunk Nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we begin our meeting, we honor the land upon which we stand."
Thank you, Joe. Are there any questions or comments about the remainder of the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Thank you. John, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Corby. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tonight's agenda has been adopted. So moving on to the superintendent's report.
All right. Kambanwell, good evening, everyone. We are excited to be here today. First, I want to acknowledge and give thanks to our deputy superintendent, Mr. Chad Wiese, for stepping in at our last session. Big for your leadership and guiding the team in a partnership with the Board of Education on a great meeting. That was great viewing for all. I also want to pay attention to our community that may see a slightly different look to our agenda. You know, seeing that in the superintendent's report, where we formerly had OEs and results monitoring reports appropriately in partnership with our board president. We have moved those under Board Action so they can happen both in presentation and in action by our board simultaneously. So thank you for that recommendation and allowing us to make that step. Our first superintendent's report today will be our academic standards. It will now be presented by Karen Soss-Clever. Welcome, Karen. How are you?
Hi, Karen. Hey, everybody. All right. So I am here tonight to provide an annual update on our educational standards and to make the board aware that for the 2024-25 school year, we are aligning all of our academic construction to the standards. In particular, for our four core content areas, which is provided for you in the slide deck, we are aligned to the Wisconsin standards. And we wanted to call out specifically that in the Verona Area School District, we understand the standards to be our curriculum in the sense that it drives all the way that we design teaching and learning and our understanding of what are those grade level standards and grade level skills for students across all grade levels in the district. Those standards also are what drives our decision-making and our processes for identifying new curriculum resources to meet or exceed the expectations of those standards. And the board this year had the opportunity to approve two new curriculum resource adoptions in Language Arts and then also in Social Studies. So we wanted to be sure that we not only elevated, these are the standards that we are beholden to and responsible to in the district for the upcoming year, but also that we are a district that listens to standards and that we look forward and have an expectation of grade level standards in every classroom member. And you agree with the situation. So that's it. Any questions from the board of the standards? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time as well.
So with a smooth transition into Board Action based off the recommendation of administration of aligning a 24-25 academic standard to amper Wisconsin statute that requires a board vote for to allow that curriculum to move forward, we are asking the board to take into consideration the presentation of Karen and recognition of our desire to utilize the standards just presented.
Thank you. Any further discussion by any board members? Okay, so moving into Board Action. Is there a motion to approve the 24-25 academic standards as proposed by leadership?
So moved.
Thank you, Corby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Juan Carlos. There's a motion by Corby, a second by Juan Carlos, to approve the 24-25 academic standards as proposed. All in favor signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So moving on, as Dr. Clarity shared, we had a discussion about sort of synthesizing the fact that the presentations around OEs and results really live in the fact that we are taking more action on those items when presented in board meetings. So we're just going to tie any presentation and information coming from Dr. Clarity and the team within Board Action to just help guide our decision-making around compliance for the OEs that are being presented today.
All right, thank you. So our first OE for consideration for Board Action today will be in the form of OE 3. And we've, as we've become more proficient in providing OE 3 monitor or all OE and results monitoring reports to the Board of Education, we want, as we have done, put those in front of you for consideration. For the purposes of today's presentation, my desire is to talk to, acknowledge and celebrate the areas where we have clear evidence of compliance, but also name an area where, and then once we lift up the area of concern of not just non-compliance, but a kind of admission that we don't have the ability to present compliance as the indicator is currently written. So we wanted to discuss that. So if there are no questions about the areas that were already provided with significant evidence, I desire to move immediately to the area of OE 3.2.2 to discuss that. And then I will go back and talk about some of the celebrations because I do want to recognize some of the growth that has happened as well. So if we look specifically at OE 3.2.2, the area of concern that I want to bring up is the overarching policy is that the superintendent will effectively handle complaints. And I think in both the written and the spirit language of the board is that I think we know that there is expectation that I understand communication or concerns, and there are really opportunities for me to learn and listen and get perspective across our organization, but also make sure that I treat any people in our organization as well, treat our caregivers with respect, no matter what the concern may be. We want to make sure that we have an amicable relationship. With that said, in the first part of the OE 3.2.2, we are able and have completed the task of developing a universal system to receive, monitor, respond to complaints. And that was provided to you and evidence last week. The second indicator, which speaks to 70% of respondents that filed a formal complaint, respond that the complaint was handled effectively. And I'll just give some credence to maybe at the time being a novice superintendent and thinking I could monitor everything. But honestly, that is not a monitorable indicator. I can't speak to first the metric of 70% and then I don't know of a system where I can tell you how someone feels after every formal complaint. So I wanted to, twofold, to check the spirit of the language that the board desires, which again, I interpret to be that respectful nature of all engagement. But when you look at the term formal complaint, that's very ambiguous in itself. Are those things that are going beyond the realm of central office to like a DBI or federal or a state-level complaint? And obviously, those are actually captured in the first indicator because those go into the document for the board to review for evidence. And you can see the results of those. Or so that it could be simply Indicator 1 and using that? Or is there a desire for the team to relook at and write a different indicator? Propose that to the board in terms of a second piece of evidence that would show compliance that I have effectively handled complaints?
So board, just as a reminder, as we engage in a discussion here, that technically the indicators are yours to write and share with us, but the space to dialogue, just in terms of understanding perspective around the second indicator. And I think the point being, how are we feeling about Indicator 1 being substantial enough to meet what we're asking for under OE 3.2? And/or any other feedback that may be helpful that we want to offer up, knowing that it's just merely suggestion, but just contemplating perhaps some modifications to Indicator 2?
I mean, I'm just thinking about, I haven't seen the system. When I think about like when complaints or issues are raised in the queue, so to speak, where somebody grabs this complaint or use it and sees it through from here, here's a problem. We acknowledge your problem. All we need is a solution. I've seen previously, and I'm not sure if this would come or, you know, be relevant here, but that we would track of the complaints that we received, how many were resolved, quote unquote. 100%? I don't know what the metric is. I don't know if that would make sense, but that would just at least capture that everything that comes in was actually addressed in some way, shape, or form, and nothing was missed. That's how I've seen things play out in the professional world and things like this. So that's my only experience. So I'm sharing that. This may be back, I don't know if that would make sense here. But it may be helpful to track that every complaint that was raised, that we tracked that it was received, but also resolved in the sense that we did something, at least addressed it. It was not an issue where ABC had to happen, but there was some solution.
Yeah.
So nothing was like slipping through the cracks. Right? Is there a control measure to make sure no complaints slipped through the cracks? That's basically what I'm getting.
And I agree with that. Up until I still wonder what constitutes a formal complaint.
Right. Some of the key terms for a complaint.
Yeah, because I think of a concern can be a very, like a walk-by conversation. I use the example of we have a phenomenal graduation ceremony, but if a person is walking out and say, "Hey, I really need you to, can you think about the parking situation for graduation?" Technically, they have raised a concern to the level of a superintendent, but I don't know that I'm going to. I would probably talk to our staff and think about things that we could have did, or I may actually know the root cause. I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus of why a car may not got parked on time. But if we went to that extent.
So this is the capturing possibly every possible complaint?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of, I get that. Sorry.
And that's what Juan Carlos is pointing out is part of the issue I'm having. When I look at 3.2, it says the superintendent will effectively handle complaints. And then the sentence, the last sentence says, "You are designated to respond to all complaints in a timely and professional manner." Then I go to 3.2.2, and then I see in number 2, the 70% of respondents that filed a formal complaint will respond. I'm having an issue differentiating or the need to differentiate a formal complaint from a complaint because in 3.2, it seems to look like we're going to respond to all complaints. Either you or designated will respond to all complaints. So for that reason, does there need to be a separation or differentiation between a formal complaint and a complaint? And if so, we don't even have that differentiation of what a formal complaint is. And I don't think it needs to be there if you are designated are going to respond to all complaints. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think to be formal, I mean, you also have to have a logging system, a formal logging system. And every single complaint, everybody has an app for access, a desktop app where it's like, here's my complaint. I got it in person, passing by the hallway, or it was an email. I'm going to take that. I'm going to log it officially into the system, therefore recording that complaint of any kind, formal or not informal, was made. And then it also logs the resolution.
And in terms of that.
And I don't know if that's what we have, or that's what we're trying to go, or that direction is what we're trying to go.
Well, and when you're saying we, I think part of that is, do we desire that as a board? Like that level of detail? Are we expecting that level of system out of leadership to monitor? Because I keep thinking about this like tech tickets.
Yeah, I don't know if that's how.
And I just don't, but I don't feel like human interaction parallels. So I, but I mean, part of that, I think is right.
This is where my mind goes with this language. It's like, I read, probably the same thing.
So one of the things I thought about when I was reading this is, you know, we communicated pretty, I want to say clearly, but maybe it was not clear. But when we first started out with this governance model, but part of this was establishing a sort of like hierarchy for like if you have a concern about, you know, classroom, you have to talk to your student's teacher. You know, if there's concern at the building level, it goes to assistant principals, or then the principals, and it works its way up from there. And in light of that and how we've talked about how this board operates in terms of our governance model, the only thing that matters to me as far as a formal complaint is when that system, when something doesn't get resolved in that system so that it climbs to the point of being before the board. Or it's not resolved, it's not resolved, it's not resolved. It moves up and up and up until it lands in front of the board. Or something of a regulatory nature that by its very nature is in front of the board. Those are things that I want to make sure that we're monitoring, but we do that in the course of our business now. Having this sort of system that tracks, you know, what we said we were going to do about kind of handling issues in a hierarchical way seems to be too much monitoring. And I've said this before, but to me, the evidence here is how many emails am I getting? And it's not a whole lot because of that system of things happening in turn at the level that they need to happen at. So I'm really questioning how much we need this indicator. Unless we take formal complaint to mean something that's risen to the board level and we take and really kind of spell out what we mean by effectively, which I also have a problem with, but this just asks us to stick our nose in a whole lot of business that we can see coming from other ways. Go ahead, Joe, sorry.
Yeah, I keep coming back to what the wording of the actual OE is, which is the superintendent will effectively handle complaints. That's defined, the superintendent defined effectively handle complaints in a way that I think is what we're really interested in, which is you have a process to resolve complaints. They're done in a timely manner, and all parties are active participants. Now, one thing that's not included in there is everybody's satisfied with the outcome. So I definitely agree with not having that as an indicator because you're never going to be able to do that. And I think Jen's original question was, are we satisfied with just the first indicator for this OE? But then I think this indicator is one that's an example of maybe we, that's process, right? The indicator was, we're going to implement this system. Okay, well, that's done now. What are we measuring with an indicator now? So I'm not sure that just that indicator does anything for that, for this OE. But I definitely don't want it to be about satisfactory. I think if we start going down the road of trying to define what's a complaint and what's not, that's going to get to be very difficult. So I'm definitely not proposing a solution because I don't have one. But just that the definition of effectively handle complaints contains in it the things that I care about. It's timely, and then people feel like their voices are heard.
Exactly. That's the goal.
Yeah.
Just to make sure it's timely, voices are heard.
Yeah.
Nobody's being ignored.
Yeah. My only question is, are we asking the superintendent to certify that in the future that they follow this process? Right? 70% of the time or whatever, you know, is considered an appropriate amount of time? And if you like.
It's usage of this.
It's universal system to receive, monitor, respond to complaints ensures by the nature of it being a system that these things are met. So if you just check the boxes, yeah, we did that. I don't know.
So a couple, thank you. First, thank you for the feedback on those. And it gives me some things to ponder. I like everything they heard, but really just when I hear timely and voices are heard, those are things that we can measure because we have the means to document this. Well, I can say on this day, we either did the phone call or on this day, we either responded to the email. Those are very measurable things, and it doesn't put the feeling behind it, you know? Those things will be cross-referenced when you look at our survey data, which is already sent to you. And as we see, which will be here shortly in OE 10, the increased year-by-year improvement in our community's feeling of our responsiveness, those things are, I think, go hand in hand. And so there are some other ways to mention that that are part of all OEs. So what I also heard was that there's actually now, Joe made another good point there, that technically is right, that we've accomplished 3.1. There's not 3.2.1. There's not, there's nothing else to do with it because that's the document. So I'm wondering about an indicator that talks about how we examine that document or how we're presenting that to the board to show these other two factors of timeliness and voice, if voices are heard, and be able to present that as evidence and write the indicator in that way.
Because the system is developed now. It's a matter of continuing to utilize effectively the structure that you've put into place.
Including another piece of it, which was the flow chart of reporting system. So that those pieces are now, have moved on of capacity building into actual processes that we have. All right. For the purposes of transparency beyond OE 3.2.2, I wanted to, in the executive summary noted, I reported areas of concern that had risen through the superintendent's office and had gone to either a state or federal level for review as well. Those are also documented. I did put them in the executive function of Board as because they are personnel issues that we, for the sake of the personnel, need to take, need to have confidentiality. But you can see how those were addressed, and we want to continue to provide that as sources of evidence as well. But also, I don't want to, think on behalf of the board, but thinking that the board definitely always wants to be well-informed of these level of complaints that really go beyond, go beyond the Verona Area School District and someone else is actually making the decision on.
And that kind of came to the point, I think, like you were saying, John, that if it's at board level, that's a different type of piece that we're talking about versus things that stay somewhat invisible to us as proof that the OE is being handled to some degree. And again, just to share, I just, as a process to the ongoing review of these OEs, which we've kind of talked about as a board of now, kind of getting in this flow, I really appreciate the executive summary in terms of just giving high-level pieces to speak to, you know, just changes, updates, you know, because the flow seemingly will just kind of continue year after year, but really elevating things that are worth distinguishing for a particular monitoring cycle.
So with that, what I'd like to do for a summary of OE 3 and then turn it over to the board for consideration is an announcement that OE 3 in totality, with the exception of OE 2.2.2, all the areas that were formerly in capacity building are now in the form of evidence. And we place those evidence into the document for your review. We were able to show stronger pieces of evidence of foster relationships, positive outcomes. And those pieces of evidence were provided to the Board of Education. Our exception to compliance would be 3.2.2. And I am taking away from this conversation a go-ahead to be able to come back to the board with a new indicator specifically around, it sounds like OE 3.2 overall, not just 2.2, since we've already put 3.1 into an area of evidence.
That seems to be what I'm hearing as well.
All right. So with that, I turn the back over to the board for action on the rest of the document. And with the recommendation of compliance would be one exception of 3.2.2.
Okay, so members, we have received and discussed the superintendent's monitoring report for OE 3. I'll now accept a motion to accept and approve the report as presented so we can begin any further board discussion. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Joe. Is there a second?
John?
I'll second. Can I second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. John, second. Any further discussion in terms of things that we are thinking about with this OE as a board? Any further offerings we want to provide as leadership and continues to mull over shifts in indicators?
I mean, my only thing is just, I know this is impossible to ask, but just making sure that nothing slips through the cracks. How do we hear about the things that are raised that just drop? Or aren't raised at all? You know, it would be, I don't know if this is possible, but it would be great to identify those before it comes to the board. And I don't know if that's possible.
Right. Or like to John's point, is that exactly how we, right?
That would be ideal, yeah. We just are able to get in front of everything and make sure it's addressed and nothing, you know, we don't drop the ball.
Which is also part of our role in monitoring the efficacy of our superintendent, right? As if those things we realize in hindsight has been a multitude of ball dropping.
Right. Indirectly, we're going to find out when things are raised at our level or who gets to know it before it gets there. Because what if it doesn't get to our level and it's dropped? Doesn't mean that we didn't miss them. It just means that a person gave up or hit their head against the wall. Those are the situations where, like, how do we capture that? Not say it's happening, but like, you know.
Better not.
But it's very hard. Right, they're not. I know, but I'm saying, it's just like, you know, that's, I think we're trying to capture the problem that if that ever happens is a possibility.
It seems like with so many of these discussions, it comes back to some of the survey data that we collect and being certain that we're asking the right questions out of community and family surveys too, to get at some of those. You know, I just think of like anecdotally, if any one of us hears something from someone, right? They just don't reach out to one of us. But if that's not an avenue where someone feels like, I just don't want to take that step, this will be so good a sense of.
I mean, that's a perfect, that's a perfect world. I'm just, I'm doing it there, right? Because we're striving for.
Yeah. And again, in my perception of it, as a board, it isn't our role to prevent those things from happening. It's our role to hold Dr. Clarity accountable if those things are happening. Do you know what I'm saying? So, you know, do we entrust that the systems and structures that he's building with his team? It's a matter of the data that we get to, you know, like we can say, yes, we do think that you're doing an effective job and that things are not being lost or missed, you know? So that, yeah, what's that pull-through to make the evidence piece viable enough so we feel comfortable in our role to say, yep. Yep, we think these systems are working and functioning highly.
Which is why this conversation is important because you continue to be grinding.
Yeah.
What we're asking and what we're looking for. And obviously, together, we And obviously together, we are working towards getting to the meat of that, you know?
And I would, those are things that I would welcome and want to know. We have multiple points of pride in our organization. But I think if we were forced to name the top five, our responsiveness is like at the top of that, of that top five. And so if there are areas within our organization that are not holding to that standard, I want to know that. And I want, hope or desire to that community will let us know that and let our board know that and the data information, because that has to be rectified. If you give the, if you have the reputation of a non-responsive organization, the opportunity for communication is actually lost because there's always that doubt or those that are just, as you said, give up before you leave the start.
Any other discussion offering from board members before we take our formal vote on the OE as presented? Okay. So I believe we had a motion by Joe and a second by John. After any other further discussion, we can take a formal vote then on this OE as presented. All those in favor of approving OE 3 as presented by leadership signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The report has been approved.
Thank you.
And we'll shift to OE 10. Similar process then. So looking to your team for offering up evidence and information to help us with our vote.
So thank you. I invite Dr. Hawkins to join us for presentation of OE 10. Thank you, Dr. Hawkins. So I want to preface OE 10 before I turn a little to Dr. Hawkins for deeper details and that we're going to break this into multiple categories. And again, this is also where you'll find an executive summary, a very deep analysis and additional information that came from our most recent culture and climate survey that we sent, we sent you the individual results as well as put it, sum up in an executive summary as well that aligned to this, to the different principles where something that I want to celebrate is in our three-year trend, some of the significant improvements that you've seen in alignment with OE 10. With that said, there's one significant area that I am both professionally and personally concerned about, which, and we are going to talk about it when we get to five, 10.5.
10 dot 3.2.
Excuse me?
10 dot 3 dot 2.
10.3.2?
Yes.
10.3.2. My apologies. 10.3.2, when we get into the area of disproportionality for, for referrals. So I think for the sake of respecting Dr. Hawkins' presentation, I might have her go first. When we get to 10.3.2, we'll pause and we'll go, we'll do that together. But I want to make sure that you're able to present the information as presented.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to present OE 10, Learning Environment Student Behavior Monitoring Report. And so what this speaks to is the superintendent shall establish and maintain a learning environment that is safe, respectful, and conducive to effective learning and high student achievement. The VASD Board of Education values high standards related to providing a safe and positive climate that is student-centered. All students and staff feel welcomed and have a strong sense of belonging. Students and staff are cared for and supported to do their best work. The Board of Education expects the student to, the superintendent, to ensure that all learning environments within the school district are safe by establishing clear expectations for student behavior and school climates that protect students' emotional and physical well-being and addresses through appropriate administrative behaviors that disrupt the teaching, learning, or operational processes of a school or school district. With the implementation of the progressive response model, schools will have a coherent model in which to follow. So the information that I'm going to share tonight, you all received it and you were able to preview it. The community can access the full monitoring report and board docs found on our website. And so for the purpose of today's presentation, I will lift up the new indicators and then the indicator that Dr. Clarity referenced, which was 10.3.2. So the new indicator was indicator five, nutritional standards. The VASD Food and Nutrition Department serves meals that meet the USDA guidelines and standards per nutritional guidelines. And so the evidence that we want to look up is that our food and nutrition department continue to meet all USDA guidelines and standards as evidenced by comprehensive lunch menus and nutrition reports for each site. We also want to lift up the second indicator. And evidence that we are sharing speaks to, well, examples of that would be, we offer our students opportunities to taste-test food. And that students were able to taste-test plant-based taco meat. Yeah. So this allows our students who don't eat meat to have an alternative. And so students were able to taste-test. And the high school students were able to taste-test each of these items and they were allowed to then cast their vote. There was also an opportunity for students to taste-test the variety of pizzas. And so this happened at the middle school level. And so as a result of our students sharing and providing voice, food service made a change to our pizza choices. And so our students were excited to know that their voice matters when it comes to the food selections. The taco meat stayed safe because the high school voted the number-one choice that happened to be the choice that we were, that we were currently using. We also want to lift up Nutrislice Reporting where we get feedback on entrees that are offered. Nutrislice is an online platform that is designed to provide parents and students with information about our school meals and like the caloric and nutritional values. Students and parents are surveyed and can rate the food items on a scale from one to five by simply clicking on menu items and they rate each item. This gives our food service team additional information. Families and students can also leave comments about the food items as well. From there, our food service team, they analyze the information that is provided and take that feedback, feedback to make other choices. When we think about indicator six, indicator six, students and parent feedback. Go back one slide. Indicator six. Okay. Indicator six also speaks to, I apologize. Indicator six, inclusive nutritional options. Students and parent feedback, again, through taste-test and the use of our Nutrislice Food Radar reports reflect the district's commitment to providing diverse and health-conscious meal options. So that is the recent addition to OE 10 regarding food and nutrition. Now we're going to move to indicator 10 dot 3 dot 2. The VASD Board of Education values equitable outcomes for students. VASD leadership will build systems and provide support that dismantle disproportionate experiences for students. The Board of Education expects that systems will be created so that the behavioral supports and responses throughout the district will be equitable and promote inclusivity. So this is the indicator where we were non-compliant. And specifically, when we look at our Black and African-American students, two or more races, SES, and our students with disabilities. What we will see is that the highlighted groups, the number of referrals increased, but the number of OSS and ISS incidents decreased from the 22-23 school year, with the exception of our students with disabilities. In your handout, there was a second document. And that document drills down into our Black and African-American students. Because what we do.
Keep a pause for a second.
Okay.
I want to make sure everybody has eyes on the second document. Is anybody related at your spot? It's not in the.
Oh. Thank you.
Can somebody hold it up? To print out. Can you hold your notebook?
No, I think that's, I don't think. Those are close session materials.
No, pardon. That's why.
It is coming.
But the next handout is a data, is a data dig where we drove down into our Black and, our African, our Black and African-American students.
So while Laurie's grabbing the document, I'll, I have mine printed off. When I opened up and I stated that, you know, it was both a professional and personal concern, essentially talking about our, the Black African-American disproportionality in, in referrals. So when we see data trends, obviously we see this earlier than the board. We see things progressing in a, in a fashion. We begin to think about where the leadership moves and how do we go deeper into the data to see what's actually happening with, with a focus group.
So Bob?
Thank you. So when we're looking at the, our African-American students and the number of referrals, here is a data point that I wanted to bring forward for deeper conversation. In totality, in 2022-24, there were 463 students within the Broner School District that identified as African-American or Black and Power School. With that, 125 of the 463 students received a referral, at least one referral.
At least one or one?
One or less.
One or less.
Okay. At least one.
One or no.
Less than one.
Less than one.
Okay.
No. At least.
One or none?
No. Had a referral.
Okay.
In our organization.
Okay.
Okay. And the next one down, 82 of the students fell between one and three referrals. So with that said, 27% of the population of Black African-American students had at least a referral.
Can I just ask a clar-? So that 82 is a subset of the 125?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, but also when you look at the evidence in the indicator, you see a significant number of referrals. So knowing that and what you can deduce is that we have a number of students that are receiving a significant number of, of referrals. While that is both concerning and I'm thinking about the leadership moves that Dr. Hawkins will soon, soon present to you, I, I, I feel like the level of transparency and naming, calling it out and thinking about what we need to move forward is why we function together as a board superintendent. And not hiding behind it once. Because if we look at our overall number of referrals, we are not a high-referral organization. That is why it's so important that every time you dig down and look at our groups and look at our, look at our, look at our focus groups. I also want to do a cautionary tale and just follow along with me. And I'm trying not to be, like, say something which could be, I'll just, I'll just say a statement. You can do a little bit of that. I'm always concerned when we look at data and then we center one group as the comparative group to look at. In this case, I'll be very specific. I don't want us to be an organization that looks at white students as the norm and then compare every other group to, to, to students. That can, that can, that can cause, you know, a lot of biases to be created that we don't really, really want. So I'm also very thoughtful about not presenting data in that, in that, in that way. That said, it's still important that we call out, recognize, and begin to talk about how we will address this disproportionality that we see, that we, that we know and that exists. How do we continue to look at our own systems and uncover any potential biases? And at the same time, I don't want anyone to misconstrue that I'm saying that I don't want you, if a student has earned, truly earned a referral, documented as such. I don't want anyone to, to think I'm saying anything different. That I don't want behaviors not documented. That is why we have referral systems. But is what do we do with that to make sure that there are not repeated behaviors overall? And how are we looking at our priority areas of sense of belonging, welcoming environments, culturally responsive curriculum that, that often contribute to behaviors along the way? So are there any questions about what I just said? And just making sure that my stance is clear on how we, and how I would like us to move forward with it. Talk about Hawkins. Can I?
So Dr. Clarity summed up the data and shared with you our district's stance. What I will now share with you is our leadership moves and what you all can continue to expect to see as we move forward. So we will continue to ensure rigorous grade-level standards aligned with instruction every class, every day. That's kind of become our motto when we talk about grade-level standards, grade-level standards in every class, every day. This is reflected in the VASD Teaching and Learning Framework. And that Teaching and Learning Framework will be introduced and socialized to our leaders and our staff with the kickoff of our Leadership Institute. We'll continue to lift up the PLC process so that we, our teachers develop engaging lessons that are culturally responsive and relevant. In the 23-24 school year, the district identified the Restorative Practices Coordinator. And so that role, along with the work of staff in our district, we will continue to support and ensure that we are incorporating restorative practices with fidelity in all of our classrooms across all of our school buildings. We'll continue to strengthen the school-based multi-level, multi-level systems of support, MLSS. We'll continue to build and enhance the existing system to better identify and address the academic and behavioral needs of students that include the development, that include the development of our K-12 Extended Learning Pathways with an intentional focus on K-5 elementary foundations. I also want to say, you know, as reflected in our equity statement, we do acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system so that some individuals on the basis of their identities face barriers. And so we're committed to removing and dismantling those barriers. And so in acknowledgement of such, the Broner School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity. So I'll pause and give space for questions and then allow you all to close this section and have your discussion.
Congratulations on our discussion purely about 3.2.
Whatever questions they have about OE 10 and 10.3.2.
Thank you.
I've shared all of the points because you all received the information. And all other indicators were compliant. So unless there are specific questions about any one of those indicators, we were compliant in all of those indicators. And then 10.3, we were in, there's two indicators. We're complying on one and not complying on the second one.
I have something that's not so much a question, it's a comment that kind of points out how sometimes interrelated our different operational expectations are. Because I, I was not that long ago reading some, some, some data that was out there that was talking about. So we have an expectation that the makeup of our staff roughly reflects the community that we live in. And what I was reading was, was talking about that when that happens, this is one of those things that you see go down, the disproportionality of these out-of-school susp- The disproportionality of these out of school suspensions and things like that. Because when you have members of a diverse group of your community among your staff, you start getting those cultural barriers get broken down. I just, this made me think of the kind of the inner connectivity of some of our operational.
Yes.
Joe took some of the words right out of my mouth. When I see these numbers at the bottom here, they're alarming and I also go to uh, lack of cultural competency and implicit bias. My mind goes right there because you can't tell me based on these numbers that, that all of these students percentage-wise that there was a referral, there was something missing there before the referral process started. And I think Joe hit on that. And that is educators representative of the student population knowing what those opportunity gaps, those barriers that they face on a daily, that we base on a daily, uh, what that student's going through before they even step through our door. So I think when I see these numbers, I go right to that, that, that we're missing these three bullet points where I see leadership moves. I can think of four or five more bullet points that can go along with this to help decrease this at the bottom of the sheet of paper. And one of them Joe touched on.
Hiring and recruiting of our staff.
Yes.
Which is looked at up in our strategic framework as one of our key priorities that we're focusing on. So that is definitely, while it's not named here, it is certainly something that we're committed to. It's looked at up in our five-year strategic framework.
Now, I've seen it firsthand when I come visit with students and, and uh, Sean will say that student hasn't said a word in how long and he just spoke to you and opened up about what's going on. That's that connection that I think is missing with a lot of our students.
Yeah, similarly, it's how does the first row become the second row? Right? When we're talking about the students that are initially here and then the large percentage that are in that next row of having additional referrals, what does that look like? What is the, is it a same type of behavior that's getting called on multiple times? I, I think that digging in, not only to the data, but to the stories that you both are elevating of what is the, the source of the referral? And, and wondering about similar deep dive with any of these areas that were read? I'm just curious, like similarly, that analysis of students that are falling into that pattern of getting multiple referrals for potentially some, you know, and I'm not trying to assume it's similar behaviors, but with any of those other focus groups, that similar analysis of that one or greater than one.
Yeah, and there's. Okay, that's, that's a great left there we didn't say yet. There is a significant amount of intersectionality between the three groups. That's the same student that are falling into all three.
Just a great extra note about looking at that data. Yeah, that you're not talking about one, yeah, every student doesn't belong in one category.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
So I have a lot of questions about data here. I would be curious to have like a more strict breakdown around the number of referrals, like the number of students that had zero versus the number of students that had one, versus the number of students that had two to three, versus the number of students that had three or more. So it's more strictly broken up. I would, I wonder if part of, part of what I'm struggling to wrap my head around here is in the first column for each indicator or for each of the, we're looking at the percent of that group as a percent of the total population. In the second column, we're looking at the percentage of referrals out of the overall pot of referrals. And I'm not sure how well those two things together help us. I would also be curious about seeing you know, that, so you've got the first number, the percentage of the overall population and then the percentage having next to it, the percentage of that particular group that got referrals. Does that make sense? So if we've got, you know, say I'm looking at English language, uh, when it's a second to the bottom. We've got fifteen point two seven percent of the population. What I'd be curious to see next to it is of that, that group, the fifteen point two seven percent, how many had a referral or an out of school or in school suspension? What percentage of that group has one of those things? Not necessarily what percentage of the referrals is comprised of from that group, but the number of students in that group that have that referral. And then doing the deep dive in here makes a little bit more sense. We break it down into zero referrals, one referrals, two, three, or three or more. I would also be curious about I have so many little notes here. Trying to understand how many students overlap in different groups. You know, as percentages, you know, maybe, and then seeing where that overlap occurs. And then I think Dr. Clarity rightfully brought up, like we're not benchmarking against white students as normal. We're looking at, through some of these, we're looking at like as percentages of the total student body. And then kind of continuing that through like, how does some of these compare when we look at against the whole student body? As kind of a benchmark. The other thing that I didn't see on here that I'm curious about is as a category, and I realize that this is not a great metric, but it's the only one that we're allowed to connect, collect, is free and reduced lunch. Cause I know in the past we've seen similar gaps amongst economically disadvantaged students. And I'd be curious to see that broken out and I'd also be curious to see that overlap there. So I've got a whole set of matrix on here that I'm like, that I drew out and I'm asking questions.
It's probably beyond the SEF's data.
Right.
Oh, is that social, is that?
Social economics.
Yes.
Social economics, so that's, that's.
That's very good.
Okay, perfect. So I heard that is social and emotional supports.
Acronyms are.
Too many acronyms, okay. No, that's perfect, so I'll read that one differently, yeah. So I really would be curious to see the overlap there.
So that's that intersectionality. Are you, were you referring to the intersectionality that Dr. Clarity looked it up saying that some of these students may fall into multiple groups? And so just digging down to one, to determine how many students might meet criteria being in multiple groups along with almost the same way you dug down in the, what the African American students like to see it for the other focus groups.
Let me think about, that's a good question. Let me think about that. I might draw up another matrix.
What I'm hearing is something I've been preaching since. In equity audit.
I haven't heard it in a while.
That's, that's what I'm, everything John just mentioned, breaking it down to that level of detail. That's, I think it's time. It sounds like it's time. And also with that audit, the qualitative is gonna tell, tell us everything about these numbers that we're seeing here.
I wanna also, I wanna endorse what John was saying about how shifting the data from a per referral viewpoint to a per student viewpoint. Because right now the data is being skewed by students who have multiple referrals. And the data is also being skewed by having students count multiple times in different categories. So finding some way to normalize out that data so that it's painting an accurate picture would be really helpful. And I think uh, separate from that, going on a per student basis might give us a better picture. I'd also like to see something on percentage of referrals that result in suspensions. Because that's something else that I, I, I've read about is that it's not just students getting referrals where there's a discrepancy, but it's percentage of referrals resulting in stricter punishments. So I don't know if there's a way to present that data.
For clarification, we've got, you know, the roughly sole request for an additional data report that I don't think needs to wait a year. You know, in the monitoring report. For formalities, is the board okay with moving forward with the rest of our two board members for data requests? And then I will offer it up to our board president with date to come back and present the criteria that was played out.
Yeah. Is that something that board members feel we wanna withhold our vote on this OE until we get additional data? Or are we still gonna move forward with, okay, just to clarify that we can still move forward with board action as, as presented tonight? But I think that additional information just provides more transparency and discussion about things that I think we're all finding important and valuable.
Okay. We can go back and listen to the video, but Laurie, do you feel like we have the requests from board member Porco and board member Haines captured as far as the data?
I think we should. Do you read that, yeah?
I feel like you got it, we're, we're good.
Well, I do, Mr. Porco, when I asked him for clarification, he said, I need to draw up another matrix. So are you sure that we have what it is?
He wants.
I, I, it's, it's not a one, I'm just, I'm just drawing up everything that's in my mind. It's gonna be a lot of boxes and you guys, you guys are the experts. So uh, maybe I'll hand it to you afterwards and let you do whatever you feel is appropriate. Cause um, obviously sometimes I get that somewhere out over my skis. So, yes. And no.
Yeah, do you have a formality, board? Can you email it to the whole board? So the whole board has, has equal access to the request.
Yes, thank you. Good reminder.
Thanks.
And I apologize if I'm missing this as we're having this conversation. I realized I could be missing it where I'm just, is, again, I'm so curious about what is the flagged behavior? Is there like the protocol that's used or the referral forms? Do we have the ability to see a sample of that? Not, not a student sample, but like just what, what does that look like? If I'm filling out a referral as a, as a teacher, what is the like, the key checkbox or things that are identifying? Do you get what I'm saying? Like I'm so curious again for patterns in terms of what is being deemed referral worthy? And if there's patterns within that.
So you're talking about perhaps is it disrespect? Is it defined?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
We aren't able to identify what the behavior was, so we can.
Cause I think that, that just feels curious to me, right? About maybe some of the underlying stories that could be part of this, the qualitative piece of the information of. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I also want to give a, for your question, Jen, uh, give a shout out to our, our K team and our powerful team and including Mr. Because maybe a year and a half ago, there was not the same system per site. And so that has been a journey in itself to make sure that the, what a code is at Glacier Edge is a code as you agree. And what a code is that's been hopefully called at Banjo Bridge. So that has been a process within itself, which lives within OE ten is working about.
I think I recall Dr. Jackson presenting about that, right? About just that process, yeah. Yeah. Any other additional questions or discussion that board members feel would be helpful right now in this space before we at least move forward with the board action on this OE as being presented?
So given, we would submit that uh, the remainder of evidence is recommended of, of compliance with, with the exception, obviously the one that we just presented, two point, three point two, which is the one indicator out of two point three.
Okay, so board members, we've received and discussed the monitoring report for OE ten. I'll now accept a motion to approve the report as presented, so we can just check in on any further discussion before our vote. Is there a motion? Thank you. John, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Any additional discussion, questions, anything that board members wanna elevate before we continue our vote? Okay, so if a motion in a second to accept and approve OE ten as presented as being in compliance with exceptions, all those in favor of approving this report as such signify with I.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The monitoring report is approved as presented. Thank you, board members. Dr. Hawkins, thank you.
Thank you. Glad to argue. So thank you.
Okay, so that closes up board action. Moving on to board updates, just in terms of OE eight, any planning updates? Just a note that today, um, at five PM, July eighth was the deadline for A applications for our vacant board seat for the Fitchburg portion seat. We have not received any applicants. So we will reconvene and when we come back on July twenty-second, our next meeting, we'll have plans in terms of our next steps as a board to continue to work to find another board member from our Fitchburg community. If anyone's still interested, send an email, we can find a way to, to continue the process. So please let us know if you're out there and interested. Any other OE eight updates, planning for any board members?
Uh, yeah.
So with B, our GD, C, SDC? What's that?
General Board Updates?
Yeah.
General Board Updates?
Yeah.
Not with that.
Okay.
General Board Update.
Okay.
I uh, am still our CISA delegate, but the board member from Middleton was very excited to represent our district. So I stepped aside so that he could represent our district at CISA two on the governance board. So I am just a delegate for now. And if he hates it, I'll go back.
Thank you.
He seemed very interested.
Okay.
Say Milton, not Middleton.
Middleton.
Middleton. Okay.
Let me talk.
Thanks, John. Thanks for your continued service with CISA two on our district's behalf. Board members, if you have not already, if you could look into board docs linked in the agenda under board updates, part B. We have some information to share about the Greater Dane County School District Consortium. So Dr. Clarity, John and myself attended a meeting in May where a group of Greater Dane County School Districts are working to just partner and coalesce around kind of more shared visions that we're feeling by just geographically being located where we are and things that we're working toward as districts that are more aligned in terms of working around equity and achievement for students. So we are putting before you all the mission statement of the organization to consider. Basically, again, looking in terms of a, just a partnership locally with other districts, leadership boards to find some momentum, to continue to advocate locally and beyond. So we'd love for you to take a peek at that mission statement. And at our next meeting, we'll spend a bit more time just formalizing, I guess, a vote to fully participate within the consortium. So that way you have time to read through the mission statement, to ask any questions, which you can certainly surface now. Just anything in terms of your wonderings about this idea of kind of aligning and working alongside some fellow districts. Anything you wanna add, Dr. Clarity?
Thank you. First, you are so humble because Jen actually also serves on the planning committee for the Greater Dane County Consortium. And John, uh, and that's why I love Jen, and John, uh, as much as I, we go back and forth, has provided some great insight into how the mission statement was written in a far more comprehensible and meaningful way. So thank you, John, for that. So I think not just be part of the organization, but have a leadership role uh, in the Greater Dane County Consortium along with Representative Middleton and Representative Sam Curry has, uh, I think will strengthen us all and allow for greater partnership. And uh, again, the purpose of advocacy at the state level for the needs of our students in a way that is not dismissive of equity and equity work is really at the heart of why we're doing this together. why we're doing this together.
Yeah. Well, thoughts from board members now, knowing that we'll just revisit this. So again, you have time to just be able to read, process, think of questions you may have about work and the mission of the group. Yeah. Yeah, excited what we can continue to do beyond our Dane County area as well. But that was something we really talked about in terms of the mission of really thinking locally and beyond, to see what we can do to be advocates for schools. Okay, and moving on to public comment. Laurie, if I missed anything, anyone for public comment this evening? Okay. Moving on to agenda seven, superintendent's consent agenda, make sure you've taken some time to look over. Are there any questions about anything listed in the superintendent's consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. The superintendent's consent agenda is approved as presented. And then board consent agenda, taking a few more moments to look over the items listed there. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. The board's consent agenda is also approved. Future agenda items, just our list of regular board meetings. We got the invite, thank you, Dr. Clarity, via email for convocation on August 26th. That happens to be the day that I will have a teenager at home officially, August 26th?
Yeah, you get 21-year-olds.
Oh, same day? Hey, hey. I'll stick with 13 for a little while longer than, rather than 21. And then I am just waiting to hear from, I think, a few more folks to try to rally around some workshop dates. So thank you again for the communications and emails, see if we can get something on the calendar so we can continue to grow and work as a board and work around things that I know we like to say, gosh, we'd love to have more time for that. So I look forward to spending some additional time with all of you on those topics.
Covering stacks.
Great. Food is always helpful. All right. Unless I missed anything, I will accept a motion to adjourn to closed session under State Statute 19.85 sub 1 sub E to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding potential purchasing of property. Is there a motion?
Some will.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's take a roll call vote to go to closed session. Joe?
Aye.
Corby?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Lauren Carlos?
Aye.
I am a as well. We are officially adjourned to closed session. Thanks for those of you that would be departing during closed session. Appreciate your attendance.
Thank you.